Welcome to the December 20, 2023, meeting of the Sandusky City Commission. We'll have an invocation offered by Commissioner Harris, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
As we stand on the precipice of a new year, let us weave the thought of passing the torch into the fabric of fresh beginnings. In this transitional moment, may the incoming leaders not just inherit a position, but embrace a sacred duty to invoke change, unveil novel ideas, and cast a rejuvenating perspective upon the canvas of leadership. In this symphony of evolution, let our constituents be the harmonious notes that resonate with openness, support, and encouragement for the trio poised to lead. As the calendar turns its page, let the dawn of the new year be a symbolic sunrise for the leaders who carry the torch into uncharted territories. May 2024 be the chapter where the winds of the change are harnessed and the spirit of innovation becomes the guiding star. In this fresh landscape of time, let the leadership journey be marked not only by the turning of the clock, but by the turning of minds toward progress and transformation. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flying of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As far as you call the role.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Waddington?
Here.
Mr. Harris?
Here.
Mr. Meinzler?
Mr. Poole?
Here.
Mr. Murray?
Here.
Mr. Brady?
Here.
Mr. Pajali?
Here.
Commissioners, you have before you the minutes of our meeting of December the 11th, 2023. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Waddington?
I move that we accept the minutes of the December 11th meeting as presented.
Second.
Second.
But a motion and a second discussion. Without objection, the motion will be approved. Hearing no objection, those minutes are approved. We have the pleasure of swearing in two of our four newly elected commissioners this evening. Both Commissioner Vargo and Commissioner Waddington have been sworn in as of last week, so they have that ceremony behind them. And we would like to welcome both Mrs. Koontz, who will provide the swearing in for Dr. Koontz, and I would like to welcome Judge Bennett, who will provide the swearing in ceremony for Mr. Crable. Mr. Koontz.
Aye, Dr. Richard S. Koontz.
Aye, Dr. Richard S. Koontz.
Do solemnly swear that I will support, protect, and defend the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I will support, protect, and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the state of Ohio.
And the state of Ohio.
And the charter and ordinances of the city of Sandusky.
And the charter and ordinances of the city of Sandusky.
That I will honestly, faithfully, and impartially discharge the duties of my office as city commissioner.
That I will honestly, faithfully, and impartially discharge the duties of my office as a city commissioner.
And not be influenced by any consideration except that of merit and fitness in appointment or discharges of employees.
And not be influenced by any consideration except that of merit and fitness in the appointment or discharge of employees.
That I am currently qualified to hold the office.
That I am currently qualified to hold the office.
And will maintain all of the qualifications throughout my term in office.
And will maintain all of the qualifications throughout my term in office.
In compliance with Section 4, Section 6, and Section 43 of the city charter.
In compliance with Section 4, Section 6, and Section 43 of the city charter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I, Jeff Crable, do solemnly swear.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
And the state of Ohio.
And the state of Ohio.
And the charter and ordinances of the city of Sandusky.
And the charter and ordinances of the city of Sandusky.
That I will honestly, faithfully, and impartially.
That I will honestly, faithfully, and impartially.
Discharge the duties of my office.
Discharge the duties of my office.
As a city commissioner.
As a city commissioner.
And not be influenced.
And not be influenced.
By any consideration.
Any consideration.
Except that of merit and fitness.
Except that of merit and fitness.
In the appointment or discharge of employees.
In the appointment or discharge of employees.
That I am currently qualified.
That I am currently qualified.
To hold the office.
To hold the office.
And will maintain all the qualifications.
And will maintain all the qualifications.
Throughout my term in office.
Throughout my term in office.
In compliance with Sections 4, Section 6, and Section 43.
In compliance with Sections 4, Section 6, and Section 43.
Of the city charter.
Of the city charter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
We were having a photo opportunity if we can by all four newly elected commissioners. I have pried Mr. Waddington off the bench, and he's agreed to come down also. Can you kind of get out of the way? Or?
Get out. We should sit down.
I feel like you need it.
Have the logo.
Let's get out of the way.
All right. Get tight. One, two, and three. Do a couple. Perfect.
I think you probably already know that the romance of running for office and getting elected is now over. The work begins on January 1st. So welcome. I think all of us look forward to serving with you and continuing to move this city forward. We have a public hearing this evening regarding the rezoning of 920 West Osborne Street. That hearing will be conducted by our chief planner, Erin Blair. Ms. Blair?
Thank you, Commissioner President Brady, and fair to our incoming commissioners. Welcome, and I look forward to learning from you and working with you. I'm at the podium this evening to conduct a public hearing for the rezoning of 920 West Osborne Street, parcel 5865001.000. That's known as the former Osborne School Building and the surrounding property. Following the October 23rd, 2023, meeting, the city commission approval for the city to purchase the former school building, and the school board authorized that sale, planning commission had a meeting that very week, so that Wednesday. There was a conversation about the goals for the project, which is to become a residential project for seniors, and they initiated a rezoning to rezone that property from public facilities to residential multifamily. Without that zoning in place, that project would not be possible to move forward. So that is what we are discussing today for the public hearing.
Questions or comments, commissioners? And questions or comments from the audience? If you share with us your name and address, we'll write it in the record.
Yes, Sue Doherty, 1016 Third Street, Sandusky, and also the director of serving our seniors. And I am just here this evening to thank and support the city commission for the efforts to rezone this neighborhood, to support senior housing and transitioning Osborne School into affordable housing for older adults. Thank you very much for your work on the project.
Ms. Doherty. Additional comments from the audience or from the commission? If not, I will declare this public hearing closed. Commissioners, you have before you several communications from staff recommending various pieces of legislation. Can I have a motion to accept those communications?
So moved. Second.
But a motion and I think a second?
Yes.
Discussion? Without objection, that motion will be approved. Hearing no objection, that motion is approved. Commissioners, we have four items on the consent agenda this evening. Do any of you wish to move any of those items to the regular agenda? Ms. Myers, you present the consent agenda.
Yes, Mr. President. Item A, approval of 2023 replacement pages to codified ordinances by Walter Drain. Item B, approval to purchase carbon for Big Island Waterworks. Item C, approval of 2023 Amendment Number 8 to general appropriations. Item D, approval of temporary appropriations for 2024.
Commissioners, having heard these ordinances and resolutions, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Poole.
Move to accept the consent agenda and declare that all ordinances and/or resolutions, as drafted and presented to the city commission under the consent agenda, shall take effect in accordance with the section reflected in the ordinances and/or resolutions, whether it be in accordance with Section 13 or Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
But a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Myers, you call the role on the motion, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
And now on the ordinances.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Those ordinances are passed. We'll now turn to our regular agenda. Ms. Myers, you present item number one, please.
It is requested an ordinance be passed amending ordinance number 23248, passed on December 11th, 2023, authorizing and approving a grant in the amount of $900,000 to the Greater Sandusky Partnership for the purchase of furthering community and economic development and providing services to the city, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Prior to asking for a motion on this ordinance, I'm going to provide some explanation as to why we are receiving this tonight under Section 14. At our last meeting, we heard this ordinance under Section 13. Had we had a second reading of that at this meeting, this ordinance would not have taken effect for 30 days. That would have proved to be a violation of our charter in that no legislation can be enacted by a different set of commissioners that are taking office when it is passed. So to avoid a conflict with our charter, I ask staff to present this legislation as if it is a new piece of legislation under Section 14. I will ask for a motion to move that legislation forward.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Murray.
I move to approve this ordinance pursuant to Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
But a motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waddington.
I'd like to thank Colleen Gilson, our Community Development Director. That's a lot of work and reading through this again for the second time in the last, what, 10, 10 days, two weeks. Like to say good job. I know it's a lot of work, so I appreciate it. Thank you.
Additional comments, Commissioner?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Poole.
If somebody has comments, that's fine. I got a couple of questions for folks.
Sure.
If somebody else has comments, they can make them.
Additional comments, Commissioners? Mr. Poole?
Yeah, just if would, on the funding, there's some things that the public should be. As we move forward in this, we need for everybody to be on the same sheet of music. So whoever is responsible, would you explain the funding in terms of where the money came from that makes up just $300,000 and why we're doing it this way?
Ms. Gilson, would that be you or would that be Ms. Reader?
I think we'll maybe tag team it. As directed, well, first of all, I thank you again, Commissioner President, and through the President to the Commissioners. If these funds are approved today, they will cover the expenses of the Greater Sandusky Partnership, as well as provide direct programming, such as Party at the Pier, for Sandusky residents. The Greater Sandusky Partnership has committed that at least 50% of the grant would go towards programming, or $150,000. So that is in line, today's request is in line with the 2022 commitment made to the Greater Sandusky Partnership. The funds, as presented in the communication, there's $150,000 coming from capital project funds or programming funds that already go into programming, such as Party at the Pier, that will now be under the guidance of the Greater Sandusky Partnership. $300,000 from general funds from the community development or old Accademy funding that was provided to that organization in the past. $50,000 from the general fund that were earmarked for marketing, and $70,000 from capital projects funds or Issue 8 Economic Development Grant funding.
Ms. Reader, anything to add?
I think she covered it.
Okay. Mr. Poole?
Yeah, I just want to be sure we're clear so everybody understands. The first $150,000 from capital project funds is money that we were spending anyway.
Absolutely.
On the projects down at the pier.
Absolutely.
They are now going to be taken over by GSP.
Absolutely.
Okay, that's the music and so forth and so on.
Yes.
All right. Does any of this contract with GSP impact other events downtown, for example, like Bike Week?
I don't believe it would impact Bike Week.
Okay, or any of the events we're already having. Okay, that's great. The next, and at the $70,000 in capital projects funds, what projects was that $70,000 going to before? It is not now. You need to know what we're giving up and for what we're getting.
So through the Commissioner President to Commissioner Poole, the $70,000 that comes from capital projects funds, those are our Issue 8 Economic Development dollars. So typically, we have about $500,000 annually that we implement and they administer for economic development grants. So $70,000 of those funds for next year would be used towards Greater Sandusky Partnership.
Okay, then, that's fine. Next question, I want to be sure, the metrics for success in this presentation, is that what you're calling deliverables? As you switch terms, I need to be sure that we're talking about the same thing.
Yes, the metrics for success. I apologize, that's the old grant maker terms in me saying deliverables, but the metrics for success will be what we are measuring Greater Sandusky Partnership's deliverables for the year, and I will be meeting with them quarterly.
Okay, just one last thought about Jackson Street Pier. The Jackson Street Pier activities going on now that the city's been doing all the, whatever it is it takes to make it go on, that goes away, the city's no longer engaged in that, GSP will take care of it.
GSP will take the lead, and we will be in partnership and provide guidance, and they will work with us and provide the guidance of the Community Development Department, as well as Commissioners, but they will be in contract with the provider to produce those shows.
Yeah, the guidance portion is about deciding what we're going to see and what's going to be, that's what our participation is in.
Absolutely.
Thank you, covers it all.
Additional comments, Commissioners? Ms. Myers, you call the role on that motion, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
I will be abstaining due to my position on the chamber board.
Mr. Meinzler? Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Abstain.
Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, you present item number two on our agenda.
Yes, Mr. President. It is requested an ordinance be passed amending the official zone map of the city of Sandusky to rezone parcel number 58-65001 from PF Public Facilities District to RMF Residential Multifamily District, and declaring that this ordinance shall take effect under suspension of the rules as contained in and in accordance with Section 13 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waddington.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of rules in full accordance with Section 13 of the city charter.
Second.
But a motion and a second. I would like to turn to our law director for just a moment and ask him for an explanation that what we're doing here does meet our charter, and I believe the reason that it meets the charter is this will be passed under a new commission and will take effect 30 days after that. So the commission that passes this will be in office at that point in time.
Right, this is not the final reading for the zoning.
If this was the final reading, we'd have the same problem that we just avoided.
Correct.
Yes, thank you, that was my understanding also.
Thank you.
We've had a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Myers, you call the role on that motion, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Commissioners, we have an item that has been walked in by Ms. Reader regarding moving some money around to cover an expense that we are going to be compensated for, but perhaps not before the end of the year. We are calling that item number three, and that is a resolution. Ms. Myers, would you read that piece of legislation for us?
Yes, Mr. President. A resolution authorizing the advancement of funds from the general fund to the state grants fund, and declaring that this resolution shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
This will require a motion, gentlemen.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Murray.
I move to approve the resolution pursuant to Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
But a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Myers, I'll let you give a little more expert rendition of what we're doing here than I just butchered a moment ago.
Absolutely, thank you, Commissioner President. So this is just simply a resolution to allow a transfer from the general fund to the state grants fund. As you recall, we got a grant award from the Ohio Department of Development late this year to help with expenses for the Perkins Avenue waterline and resurfacing project. We anticipated, we've made the expenditures, obviously, we've made the improvements on Perkins Avenue, we expected the state to already have us reimbursed for those funds. As of this afternoon, we still do not have those funds. So I'm asking for a resolution to transfer funds from the general fund to the state grant funds if we need to between now and the end of the year to cover those expenses that we've made. Once we are reimbursed from the state of Ohio, those funds will get reimbursed to the general fund.
Additional comments or questions, Commissioners? Ms. Myers, you pull the commission on that motion, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
And now on the resolution.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
That resolution is passed, and do I understand correctly that we have a companion ordinance that we need to deal with also?
That was part of the consent agenda.
That was part of the consent agenda. Great, then we're done with that. That concludes our regular agenda. We'll turn to our spokesperson for our city manager, who is going to be Ms. Reader this evening. Mr. Orzak is not with us, he is out of town at an appointment, and he's assured me that he is not interviewing for a job. Ms. Reader.
All right, thank you, Commissioner President. First, we're going to start with donations. We would like to thank Commissioner Waddington, who donated $300 this year through payroll deductions to the Parks and Recreation Department. Again, we'd like to thank him for his continued support of the Sandusky Recreation Department. The Parks and Recreation Division would like to thank Margaret Murray for her donation of a pair of hockey ice skate rinks, or ice skates, to the Sandusky Sevista Bank Ice Skating Rink.
Ms. Reader, I know you're new at this, and you're just reading, but I think we have to back up, and we have to have a motion to accept Mr. Waddington's generous donation.
So moved.
But a motion and a second discussion. Hearing no objection, that motion is approved, and hearing no objection, it is approved. Our thanks to Mr. Waddington. Now the next kind of...
Okay. The Parks and Recreation Division would like to thank Margaret Murray for her donation of a pair of hockey ice skates to the Sevista Bank ice rink.
So moved. Second.
But a motion and a second discussion. Without objection, that motion will be approved. Our thanks to Ms. Murray.
The Parks and Recreation Division would like to thank Gwen Stephen, Luke Swartzmiller, Margie Herschier, and Carol Wank for decorating the pine tree in East Park with holiday lights. The cost of the lights and batteries was $65 donated by the residents.
So moved. Second.
But a motion and a second discussion. Without objection, that motion will be approved, and hearing no objection, that motion is approved. Begin with our thanks.
The last donation, a very important one, a donation of four voting paddles with a value of $75 was received from Brady Sign Company tonight.
So moved. Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 I will abstain, of course.
We should have extracted more.
Fancy. Yeah, we should have got more.
Ms. Reader, that's enough.
All right, moving on. The administration, we would like to request a motion to affirm Marguerite Erby to the Tax Incentive Review Council.
So moved. Second.
But a motion and a second discussion. Without objection, that appointment is approved.
From the Fire Department, we would like to congratulate Lieutenant Kevin McGraw on his recent appointment as the Assistant Fire Chief for the city of Norwalk. Lieutenant McGraw was an integral part in many Sandusky Fire Department operations during his 17 years with the city. We wish him the best of luck in his new position. Lieutenant McGraw's work ethic and dedication to the citizens of Sandusky will be greatly missed. For the Finance Department, a general reminder for property owners of vacant dwellings. If your dwelling is expected to remain vacant and unoccupied during the winter months, we highly recommend that you contact the city to turn off the water. This will help prevent your water lines from freezing and breaking, which would lead to costly repairs to the property owner. The customer accounting office can be reached at 419-627-5893 to arrange water being turned off. From Public Works Department, all new signals on Hayes Avenue between Columbus and Perkins are operational as the last set at Columbus and Hayes were placed in service last week. Please use caution as signal timings and operations have changed. The city has been awarded the grant application for Camp Street from France to Perkins Avenue through the Ohio Public Works Commission. Resurfacing will begin in the spring of 2025, but staff is working with the MacArthur Park Consultants and Associates to expedite a sewer relocation project on Camp Street in 2024 to accommodate resurfacing. The Forestry Division recently completed their fall planting of 91 trees, with a total of 147 trees planted this year. There will also be performing Christmas tree collection throughout the city during the week of January 8th. Residents may also drop off trees from January 8th to January 12th at two locations, the Shelby Street Boat Launch Overflow Parking Lot or the Kiwanis Park Parking Lot. For questions regarding Christmas tree collection, please call 419-627-5829 or visit www.cityofsandusky.com/ChristmasTrees. This year's leaf collection program is now complete. For any residents with additional leaves, the drop-off area near their Marquette Drive entrance to the city service center will remain open seven days a week until January 19th. Leaves must be bagged in paper bags. That completes the city manager's report, and I'm happy to take any questions and pass them on to him.
I can't believe you offered that. I was going to give you a dispensation for answering questions for the city manager, and I think it would be terribly unfair to do that to you, Ms. Reader. Do any Commissioners have questions?
I'm trying to come up with something, I just can't. It's like, I don't want, I don't want to let her off that easy, but I guess I'll have to.
Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
We'll move to items of new business, any items of new business, any items of old business, Commissioners, items of old business. Items of new business, Commissioners, any items of new business. I have three. I need a motion to set a public hearing for the 2024 budget on January the 8th, 2024, which is our first meeting.
So moved, second.
Been a motion and a second discussion. Without objection, that motion will be approved, and hearing no objection, that public hearing is set for 1/8/24. I also need a motion to appoint Joseph Ramey to the Audit Finance Committee. This appointment is necessary because of our loss of former Commissioner Twine, who has resigned her position there to take a job out of state.
So moved.
Second.
Been a motion and a second discussion. Without objection, that motion is approved, and hearing no objection, Mr. Ramey is appointed to that Audit Finance Committee. I also need a motion to appoint our commission clerk as public records designee for this commission.
So moved, second.
Been a motion and a second discussion. Without any objection, that motion is approved, hearing no objection, our clerk is appointed as the public records designee for this commission. Any additional items of new business, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Poole.
This is my last meeting, just want to take a moment to say thank you to the community for giving me the opportunity to serve for the past 12 years. It's been a great learning experience, and just, I just say thank you. I appreciate all the support that I received. I especially also appreciate the folks who disagreed with me that actually came forward and told me, the only growth you get in this job is when people come and tell you that you didn't know what you're talking about, and are prepared to engage and give you something else to think about, and that's really, I thrive on that, and I've grown through that. I remember the, thank you for allowing me to get through the first term, because I look back on it and recognize I was a disaster, and, but everyone, you, three of you that are about to take over, just, hopefully the community will give you the same courtesy they did to grow into the job. Guys I'm working with, the things that you didn't agree with me on, well, maybe you'll learn after I'm gone. But otherwise, thank you, it's been a good experience. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Poole.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Harris.
I've prepared some, some words as I, I guess, take my last five minutes here. I won't take five minutes, hopefully. That's why I prepared it, so I don't get long-winded. But anyhow, ladies and gentlemen, fellow citizens, friends, as I stand before you today, I am filled with a profound sense of gratitude and reflection on the journey we've shared over the past few years. In November 2019, by a narrow margin, you bestowed upon me the honor of serving as one of seven Commissioners, making me the youngest in our city's 200-year history. This journey, with all its challenges, criticism, and triumphs, has been nothing short of extraordinary. I vividly recall the days of my youth, strolling downtown, envisioning the potential within each building, and sharing those dreams with my parents. Little did I know that those dreams would lead me to become a city commissioner, a role I embraced with unwavering dedication. You see, titles never define me. In fact, the only two that matter most now are husband and father. Speaking of titles, I'm reminded that God has a way of taking unqualified people and placing them in rooms that not too many, I'm sorry, placing them in rooms that too many never looked apart. As I leave this role, I am a testament to the divine orchestration that guides our respective paths. It is crucial not to let others' thoughts and opinions impose limitations upon your path. Embracing a life of purpose involves staying true to your values and aspirations, irrespective of external judgments. Recognizing that God values progress over perfection encourages continuous growth and learning. However, Sandusky, our beloved city, has been the other silent architect of my growth. I entered this role with my hat backward, symbolizing a readiness to face the challenges ahead. Today, I leave with it forward, not just as a change in style, but as a representation of the direction we are heading. They say it takes a village, and this city has been my village, nurturing a young dreamer who still, at 35, holds on to those big dreams, as I know that I still have so far to go. The diversity of our city has been our strength, proving that leaders can emerge from any background or age. Through this experience, we've demonstrated that passion and dedication transcend titles and stereotypes. To each one of you, whether you stood in my corner or not, I express nothing but love. Every interaction, every challenge, every word has contributed to the growth we've witnessed. As I step away from this role, I carry with me the lessons learned, the friendships forged, and the unwavering belief in the potential of this city. So here's to Sandusky, a city of dreams, a city of diversity, and a city that has allowed a young kid with big dreams to step into the arena and make a difference. The hat once symbolized the readiness, now points forward, signifying not just where I've been, but more importantly, where we are headed together. Thank you for the honor, for the challenges, and for the love. It's been an incredible chapter, and I'm excited for the next adventure that awaits us all. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Mr. Chairman.
Murray.
I don't think Mr. Meinter is going to speak. I'm sorry. I would like to have heard from you as well. I simply want to say thank you to all three of you. You've been delightful colleagues. We haven't always agreed on everything, and that's as it should be. We've learned from each other, from all of you. You've made your own contributions in your own ways, and I think that experience of serving as your colleagues, as your colleague, has been special to me and valuable, and I wish all of you the luck, and I hope you remain, and I know you will remain, engaged in the city's future.
Additional comments, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Wadding.
I'd like to say thank you, because Mike, Wes, and Blake, I know the time that's involved that you put in, I appreciate that. A lot of people just look at two meetings a month, and I've always said that it's more than meeting twice a month at the commission table, and I know everyone's heart's out in the community, and I do appreciate that, and wish you all the best. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wadding.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to say that I appreciated working with my three colleagues, my outgoing colleagues. I've enjoyed my two years on the commission, and you've all been part of that. I hope, I know you all have bright futures, and I hope our paths cross again soon. And to the incoming Commissioners, I look forward to working with you, and I'm sure you'll make a big contribution to the City Commission.
Thank you, Commissioner Pajali. I want to echo all of my fellow Commissioners' thoughts to the three of you that are, that are leaving. This is more than just community service. You show up twice a month for four years, in Wes's case, you show up twice a month for 12 years. I asked him walking in tonight, does it seem like you came to 300 of these meetings? Probably some days it seems like you came to 3,000 of them. And true, we don't always agree on things. We dig in oftentimes unnecessarily and sometimes necessarily. But it is community service, and it's much more than that. And thank you for your service, all of you. I know that none of the three of you will ever stop cheerleading for the city. We will entertain comments from the audience.
Mackenzie Spriggs, 616 Superior Street in Sandusky. Having had the privilege to work for all of our outgoing Commissioners, I also wanted to just say thank you. Thank you for your service from our community on a personal level. Thank you for always being kind and fair. And to the incoming Commissioners, just welcome on behalf of our entire community, and we look forward to getting started.
Thank you. Additional comments from the audience? Please step to the microphone and tell us your name and address, and we'll put it on I know who you are, but the rest of the people may not.
That's all right. My name is Craig Hecht. I live at 22246th Street, but my wife and I own the Manor Motel at the corner of Perkins and Columbus. I'm just here just to offer a thank you for the improvement that was made by the, on behalf of the city, and then Aaron Klein, for, there's an embankment there on the Perkins Avenue side when they did that water project. And, you know, when they tore out the sidewalk and all that, I just, I don't have any expectations. I just expected it to be replaced the same as it was. It just really had some paver brick there that was holding up this gravel that you see there. You know, that's all I cared about, you know, and the sidewalk, of course, but, you know, they made a nice improvement there, you know, with that curb. And it may not mean much to other people, but it was an improvement, and I didn't expect that, and I just want to say thank you, you know, for that extra effort, so that's.
Thank you, Ms. Reader.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Pajali.
Just as a footnote to Mr. Heck's comments, I don't think I've ever recalled this much construction going on during the summer, and I would like to also applaud Mr. Klein's work and his staff's work, because, man, there was a lot of infrastructure work going on, and I'm sure it was very frustrating for you as well as it was with the community, but it's turned out great, so appreciate that hard work.